We take up the fence exception item, I will elevate her and allow her to speak whenever she's, whenever we're ready.
Okay. Let's call the June 24th Planning Commission, roll call please.
Pulling up my agenda, I apologize, one second. Councilmember Winn? I see him, he's muted. Councilmember Silva? Councilmember Evans?
Present.
Councilmember Dodson? Sorry, I'm saying councilmembers. Oh my gosh, it's such a natural thing, I apologize. Maybe one day, we'll talk about that later. Commissioner Dodson?
Present.
Commissioner Silva? Commissioner La Micah?
Present.
Vice Chair Spalletta?
Present.
And Chair Owens?
Present.
For the record, we have a quorum, the gang's all here.
Very good. A review of agenda items. If there's any items that have rose after the 72-hour posting deadline, this is the point in the meeting where a vote may be taken to add the item to the agenda. Two to three vote is required. Do we have anything?
No sir, nothing's come up.
Very good. Public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on matters within the jurisdiction of the city of Seaside, but not on this agenda, may do so during the public comment period for up to three minutes. Public comments on specific agenda items are heard under that item. For the public record, please state your name. Do we have anybody wishing to speak under public comment?
So just for the Planning Commission's benefit and the members who are participating via the webinar, we've changed the way that we're doing participation. Now that we have the ability to do live public comments, and if you'd like to speak, you just raise your hand and we'll allow you to speak for three minutes. Any emails that have been received as of five o'clock, we've sent to the commission, and for the record, no emails have been received. I do see one person who wants to speak, so you are allowed. Ms. Sophia, you can unmute yourself and speak for up to two minutes.
Yes, good evening ladies and gentlemen. My name is Sophia Matrosova Khalil, and I recently purchased a home on 1122 Harcourt Avenue. This is my dream of 20 years.
Ma'am?
Yes, I'm sorry, okay, of the topic, sorry. I need to ask, to make extension of the fence.
Oh, Ms. Sophia?
Yes.
You'll be able to talk under your item when it comes up. Right now, it's just general public comments for anything not.
I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry, I just didn't know the protocol.
No, no problem, no problem. You'll get your minute and you'll get your minutes in just a few minutes if you can be patient, okay?
That's all.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak, please raise your hand on the webinar. No sir, no more public comments for general public.
See, no, nobody else, public comment is closed. We will go for approval of minutes for May 13th, May 27th, and June 10th. Do you want to take them one at a time? Do I have a do I have a motion to approve May 13th meeting?
I move to approve.
So I have a, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor? Alright. Very good. Okay, May 27th. Can I get a motion on May 27th's minutes?
I move to approve them minutes for the meeting of May 27th.
Very good, I have a first, or first, do I have a second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
See, no. Good enough. June 10th, 2020. It'd be our last minute, so I will, I believe I was not here, I was having internet issues. So.
I made a motion to approve the June 10th.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Very good, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all rain stained. Very good, that passes the, the minutes. Okay, we'll move on to use permit application, UP 2005. Early Development Services property owner and applicant is requesting a use permit for the construction of a 960 square foot accessory building for use as a classroom and storage facility for an existing daycare center located at 1405 LaSalle Avenue. Hey Rick, you're up.
So, good evening, commissioners, commissioners, this is an item for a use permit at a existing daycare center. And this daycare center was approved. I believe that was back in September of 2017. And that, at that time, we had gone through a text amendment to our zoning code to allow for daycare centers to be within 500 feet of a residential neighborhood. And at such time, that uses continued to remain open as such. And the applicant now is coming forward to do an improvement within the large open space area of the site. Could you go to the next slide, please? So, location map, this shows that the site is at the corner of LaSalle Avenue and Waring Street, and this is on the north side. And again, this site was all part of the Baptist church, which was segmented off and sold separately. And the church site is to the north, that remains, and then you have existing low-density housing that's on the west, east, and south. Next slide, please. So here's a photo taken, this shows the entrance into the site off of LaSalle Avenue, and there is the large parking lot. And then where I pointed a little bit further, as you get inward into the site, the location will be toward the front area, which is an, which is the secondary parking lot that currently exists between the open space area, which we'll show you on an aerial photo, and the area on LaSalle Avenue frontage. Next slide, please. Here's a viewpoint taken from the corner of LaSalle and Waring, so you can see the landscaping, which is kind of taking effect from what the applicant was conditioned to include. And the accessory building would be behind that eight-foot fence that encircles the site on the front and the sides. Next slide, please. Here's a photo from Waring Street, and the accessory building would be located as you're looking towards the toward the south. And next slide, I have another pointer that will give you a better indication. So this is inside, driving inside of the parking lot. So you can see there are some existing metal conex boxes that are being used as storage and supply needs. Those would be replaced with the new Makerspace building that is proposed. One of the things that we talked with the applicant was not only can it be used for storage, but we also wanted it to be used for some educational aspects of the building, so it kind of has a dual purpose. And the applicant was able to provide that in the design, and will show you how they're employing roll-up doors on the sides and the front facing the open space with a solid wall that would be facing back to the parking lot. Next slide, please. So here's the aerial photo, and the red dot, you can see that's the existing daycare center, which is the existing building, which was constructed and used as a educational facility by the church formerly. You can see to the right, you can see how the open space area has been developed, where they have an open, kind of a bark area, and then they have a chirp area that's further to the north. And the blue box represents where the accessory building would be constructed. And you can see the conex boxes that are right to the sides of that blue area that would be removed. Next slide, please. So here's the site plan, giving you indications of the existing layout of the site for the parking lots, and where the accessory building would be constructed at the northeast, southeast corner of the site. Next slide, please. So the building would have cement battened siding, so it kind of will help to tie in and blend in with the existing architecture. So wouldn't, and it would have a metal roof, and there would be solar panels that would be installed on that metal roof. The architect for the project will be speaking to us further, so I will probably let them give you more specifics on how the design fits into the context of the existing facility, as well as the Makerspace aspect that will be employed. You can see on the the lower right elevation, that is facing the play area. As you can see, the rook would be sloped with the east side being to the left there, as the lowest part at eight feet, eight inches, and then you'd have approximately 14 feet on the west side. So as we go to the left on the bottom there, that represents what we face in the parking lot. So there would be windows only, there would be no roll-up doors. Then as we go to the sides of the, of the structure, there will be roll-up doors to each side, which would open up into the open space play areas and other aspects associated with the school facility. Then on the lower part of the diagram, there is a roll-up door detail, as well as the man door details. And then we have a cross-section showing you the slope of the structure on the lower right. City staff has prepared a resolution for the commission consideration to approve this project. We have provided evidence and findings that would be consistent with the rebuilt, continued rehabilitation of the site, and how it would be compliant with the general policies of the city's general plans. Is there any questions to staff at this time before the applicant speaks?
Commissioners, anybody wishing to speak to Mr. Medina? Rick, I have one question. Is this going to raise the amount of kids that they can have at the daycare?
No, there, it's approved for 160. They will actually be reducing the overall enrollment by three students to accommodate the water needs associated with this project. The current enrollment, the applicant has indicated fluctuates right around 120 to 130. So they really haven't fully gone to the full utilization of the 160 on an ongoing basis. So the site will continue to have the capacity to serve the number of children being at this location.
Very good, thank you. Anything else for, for staff? Okay, we'll open it up to the applicant at this time.
Mr. Medina, I'm not sure which one is, oh, Mr. Adam French, you are
Yeah.
unmuted and now, you can unmute yourself.
Hi there, my name's Adam Frank. I'm the architect for the Early Development Services daycare facility. I think that, Rick, thank you for doing the description, you did a nice job, I think, encompassing the overall project. It's a pretty simple building, the only 940 square feet. I think that a couple other things to note. We did design the building specifically for so it could open up onto the play yard, so it has kind of a dual use, I think that's important, as well as servicing this staff in a utility function. In addition, we have incorporated some other green design features, solar panels on the roof, which we talked about. We'll be doing rain barrel collection for the stormwater catchment, as well as the roll-up doors are going to be frosted glass to kind of promote natural daylight inside the space, just make it a little bit less energy-intensive. And the overall design strategy was to keep the roof as low as possible, so it's got a minimal impact from the neighborhood. And we also were careful to select the, you described it as the board and battened siding, which is a residential look and feel in terms of the material quality, so I think we can fit in nicely with the neighborhood and also match the existing structure on site. And I think we also did a good job of setting back the structure of 20 feet from LaSalle Street, and also 33 feet back from Warring Street, so we are pushed back quite a ways from the property lines in the neighboring buildings, so. Appreciate your time, and I think that's all I have unless you guys have any other questions. Thank you.
Do we have another applicant, Leslie? No?
Yes, sir. Ms. Shannon Watkins, you can unmute yourself and speak to the commission.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm checking. I actually don't have anything to add because I think that Rick and Adam covered it really well, but I wanted to take this moment to say thank you to Rick, because Rick was actually, has been the commissioner, or has been the planning person since I did the very first center in Seaside 25 years ago, so. Good job, congratulations, Rick, enjoy your retirement. That's all.
Well, this, I have one question for the applicant. Will this building match the colors of your other building?
Yes, where our plan is to make it look like as if it was built originally when the same building was put there in 1940.
And this gets rid of the conex trailers, correct?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. That's all I got. Commissioners, anything for the applicant?
I got just a couple of questions. You, you addressed my first one, Chair Owens, which was the color. And then, I think, first of all, I think what they've done on the site, and I've looked at the pictures of of the fence and the landscaping and holding it back from the corner, I think it looks great. My only comment would be that, that the building feels a little industrial to me, especially in the residential neighborhood, especially with the standing seam metal roof, which I realize it's a bigger investment, and it's the better material than comp or something else, but that just stands out to me a little bit. I think with earth tones on the, the body of the building that tie in with the other building, that helps make it more uniform, but I did notice the existing building has a comp roof. So small things, not, not major enough for me to, you know, to oppose the project. I think it looks like a great solution. But since it doesn't state what the colors are in the application, it says to be determined, might be nice to just get a little specificity on on those colors and the roof. If it is a standing seam metal roof, you know, at least what color is it going to be? Is it going to be, you know, a darker color? Is it going to be something that's silver and is going to have a glare to it for the residential neighbors and that sort of a thing?
Sure. Thanks for the comment. I think we could definitely take care of your concern about the roof. The color is wide open, so it could be an earth tone is what we were thinking, and as far as the it could also potentially be a comp roof. It would work for both materials. The manufacturing would be a little bit more simplified with the metal roof, but I agree, could go both ways. And then for the exterior, we, yeah, our intent is to color, paint it white, similar to match the existing building, so that could be a little bit warmer color, if that's necessary to address the needs.
Thank you for your comments. Any other commissioners wish to speak on this? Okay, I just have one thing. I am glad you're putting the metal roof on. I, I was a big part of Green Plumbers USA for rainwater collections and gray water systems. And what I like about the metal roof is it's 100% water collectible compared to the comp roofs that you're dumping the first 20% of your rainwater catchment in order to get rid of the oils and stuff that leach out, but I, I like Commissioner Silva's comments. I think we should go with a, with an earth tone that blends in there that doesn't really stand out, but I definitely like the metal roof. Anything else, commissioners? Okay, thank you, sir. We will bring it back to commissioners now for, for discussion.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll start. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, did we, did we do, did we open the public comment first?
Oh, I'm sorry, Rick. My bad. We will open it up to public comment first. For anybody wishing to speak on this matter, you'll have three minutes to do so. Leslie, do we have anybody for public comment?
I don't see anyone raising their hand at this moment. And, no, no, no one is raising their hands, sir.
Very good. And thank you for catching that, Rick. You know, we get a little lax sitting at our house when we do this. So seeing nobody for public comment, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the commissioners. Commissioners? Do we have anything?
So just to follow up, I appreciate your comment, Chair, about the collection of the water, especially since they have integrated some water collection as a feature, in which case the standing seam metal is going to be much preferable to that. I just, I just say it'd be nice to encourage a color palette that matches the existing building so that, so that it just, it seems, yeah, uniform. And that would be it.
Thank you, sir. Next, anybody else?
Yeah, I'll go ahead. Yeah, I like the idea because they're getting rid of those conic boxes that's on the side of the fence right now. Because I go down that street to work, so I really like this idea that they're getting rid of that and building this one that's going to match the rest of the building.
Very good. Danny, anything?
I look like I fully support this project. It looks pretty good.
Very good. Mr. Dodson?
Yeah, I fully support it as well, and I would be comfortable if it's the opinion of the majority to add language specifying that or color.
Very good. Mr. Evans?
Completely, I think.
Mr. Spalletta?
Yeah, I agree, it's a good forward. I'm sorry about that, Commissioner Evans.
My bad.
It's a good step forward, getting rid of those containers and, and I'm actually a fan of that kind of style of architecture, so I realize, as Commissioner Silva said, it's kind of got that industrial touch to it, but the design, it's, it takes a lot into account, and I agree with the changing the color palettes to, to tie it in and warm it up a little, but yeah, great move forward.
Very good. Can I talk with the applicant one time, before I, are you there, Searl, sir?
Yeah, I'm here.
Is the, is the intention to change the roof on the big, on the bigger building to a metal roof when, when it comes time for that?
Not currently.
Okay, thank you. Anyway, I'm for the project. I'm just glad they're not adding more traffic to that area. That was my biggest fear, not knowing if they were adding students, because when you read the the agenda, it says 100, for 160 students, and I thought you guys were bringing 160 more in, but I'm glad to see you're keeping it at the, at the size it is, and I am for it, so. Needless to say, commissioners, can I get a motion?
Oh, I just have one question for the chair.
Sure.
There was a comment, we could, this is a minor project, so where we could bring back the colors to the commission. We didn't have a BAR requirement in the conditions of approval, so we can bring this back to the PC for color, for the approval of the colors prior to issuance of building permit.
Very good, yeah. I know they have a 10-foot fence there, Ricks, and I don't know how high the building's going to stick up when it sets back in a little bit, but I'm all for, you know, like I said, I walk by there every day, I live in this neighborhood, and I'm glad to see the conexes are going, actually.
We did try to keep it under 15 feet to acknowledge what an accessory building height would be for a typical residential property is why we kept it under 15 feet.
Very good. Okay, commissioners, can we get a motion? And maybe we can incorporate the color palette with the motion so that it comes back to us?
How would you propose we state that then? So I would make, well, hold on, I got to get the item up. I would make a motion then that we approve use permit application number UP-20-05 for the Early Development Services accessory building, and that we just request that prior to issuance of a building permit, we get to approve the color palette that the applicant proposes.
Very good. Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, so passed. Okay, let's see if we can get this right now. You may submit in writing within seven calendar days of this of this meeting to contest the fact, but I don't think you will since we got what you got, so. Thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Leslie?
Yes, sir.
At some point, when I come down to sign, maybe I can get a copy of that, what I just said, so that I
Just looking for it, so I can just put it up on the screen for the appeal. So we could note that any member of the public who also wishes to appeal the item can come down to City Hall or contact me at cityclerk@ci.seaside.ca.us within seven calendar days to file an appeal.
Thank you for that. Okay, we'll move on to the next item. Fence exception application FE 2001, Sophia Matrosova Khalil, property owner and applicant is requesting a fence exception to allow five-foot high fence within the 15-foot front yard setback located at 1122 Harcourt. Daff?
So members of the commission, we have a fence exception for a single-family dwelling at 1122 Harcourt. And this is the area of Harcourt, which is between Prospect and San Lucas Street. And this is off of, Hillby is your closest main arterial. If you go to the next slide, please, we'll show a location. So this gives you general location off of, you can see Prospect is to the west, and then as you go further to the east, you'd have a cross street of San Lucas. And this is an older residential neighborhood comprised of a few multifamily houses that are interspersed in the area. And most of the homes in this area were probably built between 1940 and 1960. So this is an older area of the community. And what we find in this case, you'll see with the photographs we show, the fence has a unique characteristic to the front of the fence, and we asked the applicant to kind of match a design, which would be compatible with the eclectic look. And we think we've achieved that, and the applicant will give you further explanation as to what she needs, the extra height on the fence to five feet in terms of a daycare, she is a large family daycare that she's providing at the residence. Can you go to the next slide, please? So we've kind of showed you, this is the existing fence. As you can see, you have, if you can blow that up a little bit, Leslie? Or zoom in. You can see that you have some larger vertical fence boards with in-between a more, a thinner width of a fence board. So this fence has probably been there for quite a while, and there's an adjacent property that is to the east, which has a similar designed fence. The property to the west does not, but in this neighborhood, there is a unique characteristic of properties that kind of has a unique look that, what we looked at. And so if you go to the next slide, please. Here's a view looking at the fence, looking toward a west angle, we were looking at straight on before. Next slide, please. And then here's a view looking toward the east, and you can see past that red line, that's the driveway to the site, which has a garage, which is set back detached from the main house. And further, you can see that further fence that we referred to that adjoins the property. There is, the driveway in the adjoining property is the opposite side of that fencing. So the adjoining driveway is completely away from the site, so there are no adjoining driveways that you will find that would cause any vehicle, or vehicular obstruction of entrance into any adjoining properties. Next slide, please. So here is a site plan, we've showed you in the red where the front fence is situated on the property, and we have adjoining the site, we have the property that is to the east and the property to the west. There is an alley that runs behind the project site. Again, the applicant is having a large family daycare, and so she could give you more explanation as to the operations of that, which would predicate for safety, how, what she's trying to achieve. We typically look at front fences as maintaining a height of four feet or less, it kind of keeps the massing down and keeps it to a scale of a residential neighborhood. But what we found unique to this property is that the extensive landscaping and shrubbery that is within the site and the adjoining properties, that adding the design, which we'll show on the next slide, we feel that this keeps the kind of artistic eclectic look of the neighborhood, and we feel feel that adding this element to the top of the fence, which would be, we're not going to be removing any of the bottom fence, would kind of keep that characteristic within the neighborhood. We haven't received any comments from any adjoining property owners on this proposal thus far, and we're finding definitely that there would be no vehicle traffic issues, given that this is an interior lot. And the main thing that in the findings for the fence exception is compatibility with the residential neighborhood, which staff finds would be consistent. So with that, we'll close staff presentation. If there's any questions, the applicant is on to give you further background and need for the fence.
Commissioners, any questions for staff?
Yeah, I had a quick question, and I was a little confused on the driveway description. The garage is at the back of the property, close to the alley, but from what I can tell from the aerial pictures, the driveway comes from the front of the property, and there must be a gate then that opens in that fence, maybe to the right of where the red line ends. Is that correct?
The driveway is open. We can, the applicant can express if there's going to be a gate proposed as part of this.
So when we looked at the front of the, the front elevation, the street elevation, the fence went all the way across the property, didn't it?
No, I'm not catching the driveway, the driveway that is to the left. I didn't, in the other photo, I didn't capture the driveway. I just was showing mostly the area of the fence that would, that would be added on top of. The first photo didn't show the driveway.
I thought I saw-
This one does.
Oh, so the driveway approach is beyond the end of the fence?
Yes.
Okay, so it's where the signage and stuff is. It looks like there's a driveway approach there, Rick.
There is a driveway approach that's to the left of the fence, but the fence ends where the area of, that will be added on top of the proposed fence that exists on the front property line.
Okay, so I'm, but I'm looking at this picture, just the one that you're showing right now, and it appears as though there, there's a driveway. You can see where the curb slants down, it's depressed for the driveway, and then it looks like it goes up again, and then in the shadow of the tree, it looks as though there's another depression right in front of the fence. So what I'm trying to understand is where that fence is, is there going to be, is there a driveway there and there already a gate in the fence? So that, that's where I'm, I'm still a little puzzled, and at least how I'm seeing the photographs. Yeah, there's, there's a white painted curb, and then there's a driveway depression with fence across it. The other, the view of front fence with the red truck in it seems to show that. Are you able to pull that picture up? See where there's, it's painted white on the curb across there, and then to the left of that white, there's a depression, kind of where the shadow breaks? So you can see the sloping of the driveway approach, and I think it's, yeah, that looks as though there's a depression there. So that's where I'm, I'm trying to understand what happens with the fence across that. Maybe the applicant can explain it to us further.
Yeah, and that might be, and that's going to probably be the gate that you were probably referring to that would be across that driveway. And there would be no, the fence would only be added, it wouldn't be added across the gate, it would only be added on the, on the fence.
I have a question for staff while you're there, too. Once you're done. The, is it common to have handicap painted curbs in front of the houses? Can we get that?
Through traffic advisory committee, you can get a handicap parking to be placed in front of a residential property.
Okay. Didn't know that. Thank you. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Commissioner Silva?
No, my comments are done, and I'll wait, you know, some clarification from the applicant.
Okay, any of the other commissioners have anything for staff? Seeing none, we will open it up to the applicant.
Ms. Sophia, you can unmute yourself and speak to the commission.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Rick, for the explanation of the issue. There, there is existing gate, and the picture which was shown with opening to the driveway, it is actually my next door neighbor, the previous. Yeah, you see that dark shadow area? That is a property of my neighbor, it's not mine. And Mr. Wilfred, Wilfred Adams, he actually is living there for thirty-five years, and he built this fence. He's a contractor. So he created this fence. So that is his property. My property is exactly where is red line you see? This from the beginning, yes, from the left point to the right, there is existing gate, which is moving, mobile gate, and then fence. So I'm asking to increase the height of the fence for safety reasons. Our house, we bought it last October, it was twice broken in.
Can you speak up, ma'am? We can't hear you.
Can, can you now?
Yes.
Okay, I took speaker off. All right. So the issue I need for safety, because our house was broken in twice, I had to file police report, security camera showed that a man just jumped over the fence. It is very low, it is under four feet. And because I will have childcare, which I'm licensed for fourteen children, I need to have safety for the children as well as my own children and my pets. And I would like, I would like to keep existing fence, because my neighbor built it, and he's still living in his property, very nice gentleman. And when I will increase till five feet, I would like to paint it. I got fence paint from Home Depot, which is kind of dark reddish brownish color. I hope it will be accepted by the city. I just want to, to make it more pretty. I'm a professional artist and an art educator, and I would like to make it just look more beautiful. Thank you, and safe.
Very good. Commissioners, any questions from the applicant?
I, I do. Sorry, another question. Will the front yard be a play area for the daycare? You know, how, how are you going to configure that space? The mention was safety, obviously, for the kids in the front yard, but what it looks as though is there's no gate across the driveway, and there's no gate separating the driveway from the front yard. So, yeah, if you could expand on that, please.
There is, I created, actually, I divided the driveway into equal sections. One on the back, adjacent to the garage or daycare room, is separated with, I believe it is like three-foot fence I created, and I painted it beautifully with pink and blue colors. So children actually will not come close to the street for safety reasons. Children will be playing on the second part, internal part of the driveway.
Good, Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Anything? Any commissioners?
Sorry?
Okay, I have one question. I drove by your property today, and I noticed you have a deck up by the house that's elevated.
Yes.
Do the kids play on that?
No, I keep, I keep house as a private dwelling, and childcare will be in the garage, which is actually never was as garage, but as a room. I bought property as ease, and there is no, no gas, no heaters or anything, it is just large room, which I remodeled, and it's going to serve as childcare.
So there's not going to be any heat in the building?
No, I just, as needed, I will use a portable air conditioner and portable electrical heater as needed.
Okay, any, any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we will open it up to public comment.
There are no public comments, sir.
Okay, we'll close public comment and bring it back to commissioners. Okay, Mr. Dodson, would you like to go first?
You're muted, Mr. Dodson.
Mr. Dodson, you were muted. Yeah, we can't hear you, Mr. Dodson. I am so bad.
There we are.
There you go.
Okay, it just disappeared, I couldn't find you anywhere. Yeah. I think, given the reasons that the fence is necessary, and also the attention to keeping the aesthetics of the old fence, we're adding some height to it, using a few fence behind it, attached to it. It's not on a corner, so it's not going to block any, block any views of people turning in a corner. So I really would like to see us move forward with this, improve this use permit.
Hey, Mr. Evans?
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Dodson on a number of those points. As I read through the staff analysis, the only one that I felt a little uncomfortable with is the fence is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. I just did a quick Google search and looked at the houses, and they're all, you know, three, four-foot-high fences, some white picket fence. So I think this will stand out, not knowing how that horizontal woodwork is going to kind of, even though it's going to be behind, how it's going to exactly mesh, I'm a little uncomfortable with that. I don't know that that's reason enough, especially given the safety issues involved, to deny this, but that, that's my only glitch point, is I'm just not a hundred percent convinced that it's really going to blend in with the neighborhood. I know it's an eclectic neighborhood, you can see that just from a quick Google search, but it definitely goes to stand out, it's going to be very different than the rest.
Very good. Danny?
I, I think I'm, I agree with the staff, the staff, Rick, he's saying that the uniqueness of the area and the location, seeing that, you know, it kind of blends in with the surrounding area, I fully support it. I think it's a good design.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. La Micah?
The only thing I, I wish I could, the only thing I can say is I wish the diagram, I mean, the diagram was in reverse, that this, the, it said, I guess, the vertical boards were on the bottom and the horizontal boards were on top. That's the only thing that I was concerned with.
Very good. Mr. Silva?
You know, I'm going to be in the minority on this one, and while I am a big proponent of people having individual property rights, being able to customize their, their site, I have some really strong reservations about this, and while we're not obscuring visibility on a corner, I get that, but we've talked about, you know, when there, we've talked about in this body, some of the changes that we might consider for our fencing in the future. We've talked about when there's a retaining wall behind the curb or a fence behind the curb that it'd be, or behind the sidewalk, rather, it'd be nice to have like two feet of planting or whatever. I think when you put that five-to-six-foot fence right there on the sidewalk like that, it's, it's going to be very imposing. Right now, the fence is beautiful, that yard has beautiful landscaping, it's all going to be hidden. There's a planning principle also called safety through environmental design or eyes on the street, and, you know, I know that the applicant has expressed concern about crime happening because somebody can jump the fence, but as soon as that fence becomes taller, criminals can hide behind the fence and won't be seen by police, and it can actually become more dangerous. I think that safety could be affected here by trimming up the undergrowth of the trees, putting some lighting in, more than by putting a fence in. I don't think it's going to accomplish what the applicant desires. The other part of it is, is that when you raise that fence up to five or six feet or whatever the height was, we aren't blocking visibility on a corner, but now we're going to be blocking visibility on the driveway. And so when somebody pulls out of that driveway, they can hit somebody that's walking on the sidewalk, because they're not going to see them, because the fence is going to be as tall as that child or the person that's walking on the sidewalk. So tho- those are concerns that I have. I think there are separate concerns about the childcare, but that's not the application that we have. I would just caution the, the applicant that putting space heating in an old garage might pose a danger that you want to avoid, but with regards to the fence, those are my comments. I definitely have some concerns about the, the application.
Thank you, Mr. Silva. Mr. Spalletta?
Yeah, actually, I was already thinking along, along the lines of Commissioner Silva about the safety issue, and that was a good point about the, the height, being able to hide a criminal. And I could be wrong, but I believe at one point when the idea of the four-foot fences in the rear, six-foot, were also planned for emergency cases, for scalability, you know, access, although it probably an extra foot wouldn't, wouldn't make any kind of a difference, but I think it boils down to the whole security and safety issue. As far as the design, it's okay. I think, I think it, like you said, it matches the neighborhood, and with all the foliage and everything, I think that'll kind of almost blend in to the point where it won't stick out as much, but, yeah, it's, it's getting back to the actual issue of the safety and security.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm there with Mr. Silva. I, I drove by the neighborhood today, all the way up the whole block, the fences are at the same height. I feel that if we put this, if we start altering our residential areas for commercial use, which a daycare, basically, you're turning your home into a business. I don't think that, A, it's safe, what I heard, but like Mr. Silva said, that's not what we're here for, but I sure hope that the, the city looks strongly at a garage use and makes sure that plugs, all kinds of things like that are, are up to the, to the standard of what a daycare would have to be, but I, I can't see putting a five-foot fence on this. We have a code within our, within our codes, and what it states is that you'll move three feet back, and then you can put a five-foot fence. That's your discretion, but to put the five-foot fence on the walkway, I just think that takes away from what the, the neighborhood is right now. When you look at it, they're all built, most of the fences are exactly like hers if you go down the street. They have that same two-by-twelve, and then it looks like a couple two-by-twos, and then another two-by-twelve. But when you look at the overall neighborhood, looking up the street from her fence line and stuff like that, they all follow the same contour, so I'm sorry, I just could not go for this. I, I, I'm, I'm not a fan of raising our front yard fences. They're, they're there for a rea-, they're short for a reason, so when police drive by, A, they can see into the yard, and when we start putting five-foot, I'm sorry, but that, that's just my way, and obviously, we've got a bunch of different ideas here, so. But that's just my, my thought, I can't go for the five-foot fence on there, especially not seeing the design. What, what the hand-scribbled drawing was, it looked like two-by-four, five inches, you know, two inches here, I wasn't quite sure what they were doing with that either, or how they're going to secure it to that old, old fence. So that's my, that's my side of it. But we can bring it back now, commissioners, and we can, we can make a motion. If anybody's here that wishes to make the motion.
I'll go ahead. I don't have the.
It's, it's F E twenty dash zero one.
Okay. So I moved to approve fence exception, F E dash, what was the rest of it again?
Two zero dash one?
Two zero dash one.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Who seconded?
I did.
Okay. All in favor?
I.
Raise our hands, guys, because we don't all have, so we've got one, two, how many eyes? One, two, three. Okay, nays? Okay, unfortunately, we're at a three to four, so it's declined. God, did you get that up yet, Leslie, that picture? No? Appeal may be, may be submitted in writing within seven calendar days from the time of this meeting, it shall be accompanied by the required filing fees. It shall be accompanied by the required filing fees.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, Chair.
Yes.
Since that motion, that motion failed, there would need to be a second, a second motion now to, if you were to deny the project. So basically, the mo- your, you denied the approval that was made. So you'd either make a motion for denial of the fence or you can make a motion with conditions on how maybe you would want the fence to be modified. Or you can continue this application to allow the applicant maybe to consider some of the comments you had about moving that fence back off of the front further. And that would enable it to have more of a three dimensional appearance, I think you were trying to achieve. So you could give the applicant the opportunity to come back with a modified design that may be able to meet the needs of what the commission is looking for in that breakup.
Does that, does that save them filing fees and stuff, Rick?
It would, yes.
Okay, I'm all for that then. One of the commissioners to make the motion for the, for the denial or that they can come back with other designs at a later date?
Well, no, you can continue this application, this hearing date. You can continue this meeting date to the second meeting of July. And that, and that would allow the applicant to revise what they're proposing to address your comments and see if that would address the commission, then you could take final action at that time.
Very good. Okay, so we will continue this to July thirteenth, isn't it?
Uh, that would be July twenty second.
July twenty second?
Yeah, that's the second meeting of July.
Okay.
Do we need a motion to the?
Well, I mean, you, what you can ask the applicant is, I think, no, I think it would be preferred to be the July twenty second. July eighth is your next available meeting and the applicant, that would rush her probably to figure out how to think about this. So the July twenty second meeting would give everybody ample time for her to come forward with revised plan. So that, that would be probably what you want to consider.
Would one of the commissioners like to propose that? Or do we need that, Rick? We can just go ahead and, and let it trail off to the, the second meeting of July.
Do you want to hear any comments from the applicant by chance? Or I, no, I think at this point, you're better, staff can follow up with the applicant. And so the commission can take its motion to continue this to July twenty second and we will work with the applicant to refine her drawing and address what we think of your comments.
Very good. So let's go ahead and postpone it until the, the next meeting and let the applicant.
So do you need a motion to that effect? Because I'm happy to advance one if you do.
Rick?
Yes, you, you continue that to July twenty second.
So I make a motion that we continue. Fence exception application number FE dash two zero dash zero one for Sophia Metrosova, Matt, sorry, Matrasova Khalil, that we continue that till July twenty second to give the applicant an opportunity to address some of the comments that were raised tonight.
Very good. Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we will move on.
Oh, and you can make note to the chair. When you have a continuance, you can let the public know that the, any appeal period would begin from the date of a final action taken and that could be at the July twenty second meeting.
Okay, you realize you've got to be here now at the July twenty second.
Mr. Sterns will take care of that.
Okay, very good. Reports from commissioners. You know, I, I walk around the neighborhood a lot now that I'm retired. I, we try to do two and a half, three miles a day. And I just noticed that there's a, there's an awful lot of down by the reef, there is a, a bus that doesn't have a license plate on it. It's got a number four sticker from DMV. But it, it's been sitting there over a month now and I was just wondering if staff could have somebody look at that because it's a big party bus is what it is.
Can you tell us the exact, a more precise location?
Yeah, it's on La Salle, right next to the reef, the cannabis store.
Perfect, okay, I will contact public enforcement to work on that right away.
Very good. Commissioners, anything?
I have a quick question for staff. Just, I know last year we tried to approve and we did it too late to do a Fourth of July celebration down by City Hall. I understand we're back at Black Horse and Banan. I'm just curious if staff can tell us, how is that proceeding in the era of COVID?
Rick, do you want me to take that? Or do you want to take it?
Uh, you can take that, please.
Okay, actually, um, the council has agreed to cancel the Fourth of July celebration in its entirety this year due to the regulations of no congregating for COVID nineteen. So we have canceled every celebration we have. We still haven't even reconsidered, we haven't even started our recreation programs again. We're having no summer camp programs, nothing, everything is shut down still. So we are doing fireworks enforcement though. The city council is actually going to hear an urgency ordinance this Monday at a special food council meeting regarding trying to establish a time period for legal fireworks at all, including the Safe and Same between ten PM and ten AM, trying to help curb the illegal fireworks.
I have a question for you, Leslie.
Yes, sir.
We got a lot of complaints about these fireworks going off between, it starts at seven thirty, then it's at ten o'clock and then it's three in the morning up here on the hill.
Yes.
They, are they trying to narrow this down? Because we have some friends that their dogs just go crazy in their house every night. That the, and you know, it's not bad on Fourth of July when they can put them and get them set up somewhere nice. But, uh, yeah, it's driving a lot of people nuts up here. It wakes us up every night and it would be so nice if they could catch these people.
No, I agree with you and it actually is, it's very problematic because you see the fireworks, you call it into the police, the police come, they have to actually witness it in order to do anything with the enforcement. So one thing, one message we're trying to get out to the public is if you can take a picture of it and if you're willing to sign the citation, then we can actually issue it. We've started something where if you can even say, I saw it from this property and we can issue a citation to the property owner, not just to the tenant or the person that's present. We can also cite the property owner if there's evidence it happened on their property. So one thing that is in the works is trying to start up some sort of, and I don't have all the details, but start up some sort of reward program. If you can help get fireworks citations enforced, you can get some sort of reward. Our city attorney is working on it with our police chief and that will be also just on Monday.
I understand it's nationwide.
It is.
Today show this morning that is driving a lot of people crazy.
I think it's a combination of things, people sheltering place fatigue as well as Fourth of July also being on a Saturday this year. So I think there's a lot of, there's a combination of things that are making it exceptional this year.
Are they?
Definitely suggestions, tell us.
Right.
Are they protest related possibly as well?
We have had some that have been occurring during the protests and some of them I do believe are protest related, yes.
Because I, I haven't been seeing them in the sky, but I've been hearing M eighties at night and they've been loud.
Yeah, I've caught a couple of them. Just because I have upstairs and I can see when the smoke trail comes up.
That's great.
But now that you mentioned that, I will, I'll keep my camera up here and I'll try to get a clip of it next time it shoots off, but.
Trying to supplement?
What's that, Mr.?
I said, are you going to be trying to supplement?
Yeah. I'm going to get a photography job.
So what I can do is I can send the commission, all the different ways that you can report illegal fireworks that we're sharing with the public and you can share those out into your channels as well. So, and even if it doesn't catch people, maybe it will, you know, then maybe the city council will hear what the perspective is and they may, you know, if, if they, if they have enough people who say that they don't like this, maybe they will focus a little bit more and take action.
Yeah.
Different way.
Very good. Anything else, commissioners?
Just one last question for Leslie. You know, after trying to stay up for seven hour council meetings, I got to confess, the, the last one, I didn't make it to the end. Has any been, things been decided on our budget or where, where are we in the process?
So the city council did officially update the budget. It was around almost one o'clock in the morning that evening. We continued all the rest of the items until July second. But they did adopt this council budget. There was no recommendation to reduce this police department funding, but there was a recommendation to pull five hundred thousand dollars out of reserves to put into a sequestered account until ninety days from now when staff brings back some sort of comprehensive plan for spending on community programming. So I think that was the, the largest change from what the presented budget was. They also agreed to bring back a senior planner position and an associate planner position and reincorporated back into the budget because they realized how valuable it was to the program.
Let's see, I couldn't, I couldn't, there was some feedback. I couldn't hear what you, which positions?
Uh, the senior planner position, originally it was proposed for elimination. That one has been reincorporated into the budget as well as an associate planner position. And so Gloria, I'm going to actually talk about this. I should hand it over to her if we can and talk about what the, the programming is. Gloria, are you there? There she goes.
Yes, all right, I had to unmute, sorry. So, yeah, I was excited because as you knew, we were down to zero planners and it's kind of hard to run the city with zero planners. And they gave us planning positions back so we can hire up to two staff to help with planning. And again, this is all, I want to remind everybody that this is contingent upon our finances. And this is something our city manager always likes to remind people is that we don't know what the future holds. If the finances change, we might end up losing positions again. So it's a little bit of a ride, everybody hang on, but we're going to try to give you the best possible service that we can. One of the associate planners has returned already as of today. So that was actually good news. So we're happy to hear that.
So Gloria, is the front desk open now for people? I've had some people ask me and I didn't know what the answer was.
Right, so the way that the counter is working right now is we still prefer if you make appointments to come in because we can get you the best possible service that way. But if you are a walk-in, we're serving you outside. The city hall has a system at the door where there's plexiglass set up for both your protection and our staff's protection. But yet we can still do service. There's a table so you can look at plans together, ask questions together about whatever project it is that you're bringing in. So you can still get service.
Anything else, commissioners?
Yeah, Leslie, at the beginning of this process, when you did roll call, you mistakenly said council members. And then you said, you made a comment after that, like, well, let's get back to a discussion on that or something. And I was just wondering, are, are we anticipating any changes in our council makeup?
So what I was going to report under staff comments is the election nomination period officially opens on July thirteenth. For anyone who is interested in running for council, we do every two years. There are two council member position seats that are open as well as the mayor seat. And while I just, it's my duty as the election official to get the word out about the nomination period. It's a process that starts and it's only three weeks long. It starts on July thirteenth. And you can come to City Hall if you have any interest in running for council and you can pull the nomination papers. You can also just come in, anyone who's interested, commission members, members of the public who might be watching. This is just, the election is a great opportunity to become involved in city government. If you have a perspective on how you'd like to see your city run, this is a really great opportunity. So please contact me if you have any questions, any interest, if you know of anybody, let me know and I can also reach out to them directly. But we welcome public participation and just keep July thirteenth in mind.
So I, I did see an announcement somewhere in the news that John Wizard is going to challenge the mayor. What, what two council seats are up in this election cycle?
Okay, so council member Kispersky's seat, who she had taken over the vacation of, the resignation of council member Jones. So it, it still stays with a four year block. So she just filled the remainder of that seat. And then council member Pacheco, those are the two council members seats that are up and then the mayor. So at this point, the nomination period is not open. But so there's two parts to candidacy. There's your registration portion that happens according to the election code with the regi- the election official. And then there's the campaign finances, which can happen at any time and it's governed by the Fair Political Practices Commission. Before you can start raising a dollar for any campaign, you have to file a candidate intention statement. It's a Form 501. And we have several people who have already filed those Form 501s, which is how we can know that people have intentions for running for council. Council member Wizard this weekend filed his Form 501 with his intention to run for mayor. He is running from a safe seat. So whether he wins, he would take over the mayor and there would be a vacancy that would be filled through an appointment process or through a special election, it's up to the council. Or if he loses, he still maintains his council seat for the remainder of his, for two more years for the remainder of his term.
Thank you, that's all very interesting. I appreciate learning a little bit about it.
Yeah, it's a very interesting process to tell you.
I'm sorry, one more thing, all of the seats are at large?
They are at large rather than at districts. There's a movement trying to make a lot of smaller jurisdictions move to districts, but you can only force a jurisdiction to move to districts if they have had representation that doesn't match what their demographics are. But Seaside has historically had a variety of demographics elected. So we don't qualify for the, the legal force, force of districts. But if the city chooses to go, we could become a charter city and move to districts if our voters wanted us to.
Okay, and then one last question. It, do, do, for the two seats, if there's a field of five, is it just the top two vote getters get the two seats?
That is correct.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for staff? Anything else from staff report? Okay, do I have a motion for adjournment? Any of you?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor? Aye. All right, guys, thank you and, hey, we're getting better. Hey, Rick?
Great, good to see you all.
Can you turn us off YouTube?
Oh, okay, I can do that with a second.